Thanks everybody for coming. We're going to call the meeting to order is 6:32. And we'll begin with the invocation and the touch. Lord, thank you for this day. We ask that you guide our paths and more specifically, our thoughts, words, and actions. Please be with us and help us navigate whatever comes our way. Most importantly, help us to reflect and live our lives in a way that's honoring to you. We thank you for our first responders and military personnel serving this holiday season away from home. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So that I don't miss following through on the, at the end, some of y'all might not stay the whole time, thank you so much to all of our guests and professionals that are here to support the meeting tonight. We appreciate you making the trip and being here for our items. Item four is consider and take action on the consent agenda. I'm so sorry. Thank you. Item three, public comments. Ms. Nancy, do we have any public comments today?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now we're to item four. Consider and take action on the consent agenda. This item has only one item in it. It's draft city council meeting minutes from November 19th. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Justin. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just to make a few corrections to the minutes last month and the discussion before passing the consent agenda, Courtney wanted to know why the agenda didn't have any financial reports on it. And Mayor said she would speak further about that in the reports and then added that they were not ready. And I just, I believe that that needs to be added. Those comments need to be added in there.
Tell me again, which item on the agenda is it? Under A, the draft minutes?
B, the agenda.
Under C?
The consent agenda.
Which?
Nothing is mentioned about the discussion.
Okay, before you go on, I'm having a hard time getting to the same spot where you are and I just don't want to miss it if it needs correction. So item A, draft city council meeting minutes from October 22nd.
Nope, wait.
Right, this is the one from November 19th is what we're approving.
Oh, gotcha.
Four, A. Yeah, there was just an, I just thought there should be an inclusion about that little discussion and nothing more than to say they weren't ready and that you would have that in your reports. And the discussion actually was, we did, you said, "We did not have the finances on the consent agenda today. This meeting, the third Tuesday of the month, would typically be our financial reports. Our new CPA is working hard to audit," and I'm loosely using the word "audit" to reconcile, help us get ready to close the books for the fiscal year for September. She wasn't quite ready and we prefer to give you all the information that's been going through by the CPA before we do that. So definitely it can be a catch-up meeting in December where we have multiple months to present, which of course they're not on our agenda once again.
Okay, well, let's talk about this up and down.
Right, I believe that that needs to be, that discussion needs to be on there.
So Phil, do you want to weigh in? We typically put the full-length discussion of every topic or of topics in the minutes?
Yeah, but again, I had a question.
And since it was discussed later under fine, under reports as well? Do you have an opinion? Because typically we wouldn't.
No, that was, this was earlier on A, right? Four A?
Yes, four A.
Yeah, I believe I recall the question about the finance items. And so it could be, we could put something along the lines of requests for the finance items or something like that. We can speak to that. Obviously, we won't draft the full minutes or the full vacation, but just if the question is asked and answered, then we provide those later date.
Yeah, okay, so ask.
Or is it included?
And is it not important to say that it'll definitely be a catch-up meeting in December where we'll have multiple months to present? I believe that really should be in there.
Okay. Yeah, if that's, if you want that, I think we should make a consensus if everyone wants that in there. That way we know from council that that's the details and we want to have the meeting minutes minutes if I could.
Okay. So council, would you agree to require this, the?
Well, I think it was seven.
Point, meaning recording? Yeah. Well, she's typically pointing out that I said that it would be in December. Is that what you're asking? That's what the consensus is to put that in?
I would if that's what was said to me.
Is that four minutes?
Rest of council? Okay.
I missed that whole thing, but yeah, if it was in the meeting, I think it needs to be included.
Okay, I mean, I don't think that much detail needs to be in there. I mean, the fact that it was discussed, sure, but I think what's under the mayor's report in section 9C is suffice. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Is it not a legal requirement, a major federal legal requirement for us to provide financials to the city?
Well, the question right here is, is capturing whether I said it would be December. I assume leading to the fact that it's not, we're going to have something different on our meeting tonight, but.
Well, no.
The statement that I said that this would be a catch-up meeting.
I got you.
The statement, not actually.
I got you.
Curious. So we don't have a consensus?
I think if it's in the meeting, or if it was in the meeting and said in the meeting, it should be in the minutes. That's kind of the way it should be recorded.
I think we have a majority consensus that it's that statement in the minutes. And so it wants to be provided, that makes sure that that's included in those minutes. We still accept the meeting minutes tonight if we have addition. We don't need to wait until we know back, or you can wait until we know back. So that's, that's going forward.
And I have another addition. Under, it's F, it's that financial report that should be later on, nine, nine F?
The update during nine F?
One financial report update.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for saying, so nine F is city council report by Courtney? Asking for something to be added to the next agenda?
It was your financial report.
Okay, but so under city council reports?
Next one down.
Courtney, she just said F number one.
Okay, maybe it was C. I guess it would fall under. Okay, and yeah, it's C, I'm supposed to say. Said there were no financial reports to review. It's a year in audits underway. Mayor Boudreaux also stated that construction at City Hall is progressing. However, we had an unexpected issue arise with regard to the restaurants not being ADA compliant. You also stated in there, it's been three weeks now and we've discovered that there was an omission on the plans with the number of seats that's going to be increased in the council chambers. And there's an omission of that. So that needs to be added.
I would disagree about that, but it's not my vote. So do we have a consensus that we need to add the information about recalculations of the capacity?
Well, it was just, that's just what you stated, so that needs to be in the minutes.
It's going to cost money, I think we should add it.
It's not actionable and deserving for, but.
I think so. There's a, there's a part in here that says, we'll have a full detailed look at the video. So.
Does it change the cost of the capacity?
No, that was just saying we discover something and there'll be more to report as we learn about it.
Yeah. It's just that it's stated, so I think it needs to be stated in the minutes that we can talk about.
It's fine if you all want to add that it was, I mean, if it already says that there's an issue about ADA compliance.
But there's no omission.
You wanted to add, there's some determination about capacity.
Omission on the plans with the number of seats that's going to be increased in the council chambers. I just believe that whatever was stated needs to be stated in the minutes. Instead of just one thing as is stated in the draft minutes, there were actually two things mentioned.
Would you fellow council members have to agree or prevent? For consensus or leave it as?
Still, what's the rule on it? What's the legal rule on what these sort of matters? So minutes only need to record the votes and what the actions were taking. However, again, as mentioned, if certain things are provided, if verbatim is provided for one, we usually provide for both. I do know that, you know, in these meetings, obviously, I'm talking, we're all kind of talking, it's impossible for you to record that, you know. So usually just generally discuss, there was a discussion on the following items, general consensus was, those sort of things. I think if we capture two or three things verbatim, capturing the third makes some sense. But again, there's no legal requirement that everything said is captured in the minutes. It's both the action items, motions, recording of votes. If there is a discussion, it's basically one discuss, there was a discussion based on this. And sometimes I'll see minutes where they'll put the following council members address this, you know, just kind of give some idea. So when someone looks at it and kind of gives them idea, okay, let me go over that area in the video or the recording, or let me, for public information request, ask for what they were discussing, something like that, just gives the public an opportunity to kind of go back and go, okay, yeah, I remember that was discussed. I'm exactly remember what was said, but there are other resources I can go to to get to those. So again, adding information, as long as we have the language, I mean, financial verifi, you can go back into the video to make sure that it's quoted directly. I highly recommend not trying to do a full script of every meeting minute, just because again, the statute requirement to do that is, could be nearly impossible, it's never going to be right. But again, getting it to where it's a sort of middle ground consolidation of what is discussed and if there are some items listed verbatim, like again, that's sort of how we want to address that and go from it. It helps to know kind of what, okay, for these things, you know, always put every word or whatever, and then that if it's not, if anything's ever guidance, we can draft some sort of policies going forward. Again, I don't want to deliberate on, you know, how we handle minutes because it's not technically the agenda item, but that's something we can address in a future meeting where we say, okay, these are exactly what we want on minutes and how we want it reflected. And so here's our policy approved and adopted by the city council and kind of go from there as well, if there's a refinement that really needs to be made to it.
And to clarify, I'm not asking for verbatim. I'm just saying that there were two things mentioned during that discussion, or it wasn't a discussion, it was just a report that Lori gave. And shouldn't both of those things be on there instead of just one?
Right, or three things were mentioned instead of two or three. Sure, absolutely. And that's the opportunity we have now and again, the language based on what you could provide financially, and the only reason I'm giving a consensus now is because ultimately the vote's going to be whether or not to adopt or if we can change, we'll only make sure which areas are on, who's more.
Deeter, do you have consensus or no?
I would say if we're going to add the one, we add the both and call it a day.
The two items? The Russian?
My statement that December would be a catch-up meeting on financial. And the second one was about the city hall project and that there was some calculation of the capacity of the courtroom that needed to be readdressed.
So doesn't the unexpected issue arise cover that?
Unexpected issue, what is it about here?
In my opinion, it does. I, I mean, I, I think we're trying to add a lot of fluff when it doesn't need to be there.
So I'm really sorry, I don't want to just cut it off, but since we have three that are in agreement, we'll just plan to put that in on these two items. So that's four A and five, sorry, nine.
C.
C. Okay? Anything further? So we have a motion and a second on the table.
And a second to cast it.
Right, so we'll need to.
Yeah, so.
Close that motion and start over with an amendment or?
Or we can amend the motion.
Justin could amend the motion.
amend the motion to include that approval.
So Justin, are you willing to amend your motion?
Yes. Okay, I'm wanting to amend the motion to include the compact status. Go ahead.
Thank you. Kelly?
I'll second.
Are you still second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Council, I would just take this opportunity to remind you, I know I said this last month, but I'll say it again. If you have items that you get from us in advance with your documents that need corrections, it's okay to let us know so that we can either be prepared for additional discussion or amend it so that it doesn't take 10 minutes to go through something that would be taking up your time. It's, we're not going to take anything away from further discussion if it needs it, but if you have got something and we make an omission, we're happy to amend it. Item five, new business. Consider and take action on the final plat submitted for Lamar Consolidated IS campus eight west. Welcome back. Would you like to address this sometime?
Yes, ma'am. And I think you all should have copies of the plaque in front of you. Again, thank you for allowing us to take this under consideration. This is the Lamar Consolidated Campus Complex eight west for those that are in the public audience right here. This particular project consists of 71.288 acres of land. It's on the west side of FM 359, right there at the county line. This is in your ETJ, so it not only goes through the city of San Jacinto, but it also goes through Fort Bend County. We've gone through and there's any comments that have been made. As I say, the board consists of seven reserves. Some of those reserves are like for the detention reserve, but the main use of this tract of land is for school size. LCIZ will be putting a future elementary school and middle school on this thing right here. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. We have a roadway that's going to get constructed. And again, this here is in your ETJ. Your ETJ line is a strip that goes along the south line and then also along the east line that's along FM 359. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have. I know one question may ask will win. They have not, I think the next bond sale will reduce when this campus comes into play on this side. On the east side is where the high school, that's not in your jurisdiction, that's in full shares ETJ. And we've already got their cool one that's onto the county right now for that portion right there. They're hoping to have this school, as you can see, land's being cleared right now. This will be in the fall of 2026, which is, I'll entertain any questions that you may have relating, as it relates to this plaque right here, or anything else I can add, I guess.
Sounds great. I think you kept us well informed and we sure appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
You bet. So council, the first page in your supportive documents on this item is the letter from Craig Calcomine at LJA, having reviewed the final plat and recommends approval. Do we have a motion on item A for approval?
I'd like to motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Item five B, audit presentation for fiscal year end 2022 by Natalie Ridley, Reeb Love and Company. We're going to consider and take action to approve after the presentation. Ms. Natalie, thanks for coming back.
Hey, it's been a while.
Yeah.
So hopefully you all have a chance to review the draft order that we've provided for the fiscal year end 2022. In our opinion, we've issued an unmodified audit opinion. That means that we feel that the financials are free from material segment and error. One thing to note about 2022 is that it was subject to uniform auditing guidance because the city had expended more than 750,000 federal awards. And that was because of the GHO funding that was received and spent in that year. Because of that, those extra auditing standards, there were some findings. Obviously, the first file that we found related to the failure to comply with financial reporting requirements. Because you are subject to the single audit in standards, you are required to submit a copy of the financial audit report within nine months to the federal audit clearinghouse. Obviously, that wasn't done. We will get that taken care of once the report is approved and then that finding would go away. And the other finding that we had was obviously, and I'm sure this is no surprise to anybody, was that the internal controls are considered to be ineffective and don't appear to be Then we got the, the same finding in relation to the report on internal controls with regards to the major program. Those findings just interchangeable with the two reports that were issued. But that is our audit report for 2022. Ultimately, we have an unmodified audit opinion with regards to the financial statements.
Would you mind if you go through the suggested remedies?
I will.
Or?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not tied to that. Now, that's, now that's fine. I don't know if anyone had any other questions first before we talked about the recommendations and the action that we're going to take.
I have two questions before you get into that and then I'll ask the other one later.
Okay.
Given that we haven't had a authorized accounting firm in quite some time, who did you receive this information from?
I worked with the previous city administrator and Julie for 12 months that we've been.
And when did that occur?
Pardon?
When did that occur?
It's been an ongoing process. The process originally began in November of 2023. We're there to pick up, put down, and there have been delays in the process.
November of 2023, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
The EGA letter was signed at the September 2023 board meeting. Then in November, we commenced work on that, the 2022 audit. And there have just been difficulties in the fact that it's not, FundView is not up and running as it should be.
So you worked with the previous city administrator in November of 2023?
Mm-hmm. Well, not in November of 2023. She provided information for subsequent events testing when we were conducting an audit for the previous years that we were engaged to perform the audits for. Because we have to do subsequent testing throughout the date that we issue our report. So obviously, the previous administration left or, you know, they terminated their informant with the city. If I remember, the call was roughly around August 4th, was of 23 was the date they left. And Julie and I have been working with each other over the past 12 months to get this process complete.
So as of May of this year, 2024, or at least by the mayor's report and then by a consequent, or at least what she reported from you, so I won't put her words in your mouth by any means, but just for clarification's sake, at that point, you were still awaiting information from the city. Who did you get that information from?
Ultimately, Julie.
Okay. And you got that, I guess, the month superseding man?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Go ahead. I'll leave you alone.
Any other questions before we go into the recommendations and actions? So, sorry, I've lost mine.
Sorry. We're going to talk about the recommendations.
So with respect to the failure to comply, obviously, we, Reeb Love was engaged, we've conducted the audit. The next step is to complete the federal audit clearinghouse submission. Hopefully, that will take place tomorrow or later this week, depending upon approval of the report tomorrow. So that finding will then obviously be reconciled and will be removed from any subsequent years that you are subject to single audit standards. With relation to the internal controls, the procedures will be reviewed and amended as necessary to ensure greater oversight. And subsequent to the year end, the city has engaged with an external bookkeeper to reconcile the accounting records and provide support and staff training. So that finding, hopefully in 2024, 2025 fiscal year end should go away and everything should be as appropriate and necessary. So it is hopeful that with the recommendations and the corrective actions put in place by the city, that we will get caught up and be in good standard.
Does this information include all of our assets? I know in the last, mind you, it was a couple of meetings, a couple, a couple of years ago, so forgive me, at the last in particular meeting regarding those way previous audits, there was mention of the fact that we have no asset listed here. You have assets listed at $7,000. I'm pretty sure City Hall's worth a little bit more than $7,000 at this point. I know that's not for this year, but even then, it was probably worth more than $7,000 and just, what does this include? You, you show very minimal amount, so I'm just kind of curious as to where.
I think you're on, what page are you on?
I'm on the eighth page.
There's none of the bottom one.
Yeah, seven lists only is having a net position of a little over $2 million, which is not what was reported to council immediately. But if you're saying that this is what's good, I just, I want to make a note to see where these numbers came from. So from you.
The capital assets, City Hall, the pumps and the emergency equipment, that was all fully depreciated back in previous years prior to us being engaged. So even though it's recorded in footnote, I'm going to find it for you. Footnote five on page 21, we show that the city does own buildings and does have furniture and equipment to the value of 283,000, that original historical pass. However, it's been fully depreciated, so at this point in time, there's no value associated with those assets. Now, the city's capitalization policy is that you will capitalize any ISO with a useful economic life of more than one year with an original cost of $500. In 2022, we did not identify any, any. In 2022, we did not identify any such expense that would need to capitalize. In 2023, just jumping forward a little bit, the City Hall had it replaced. And so on that year's audit report, you will see the $17,000 for the cost of the roof, which has been depreciated straight line over 20 years.
And to the best of your knowledge, you're basing these numbers off of what you received from the city or from previous administration? Were there, forgive my ignorance, I can't remember the word. It's drawing, I'm drawing a blank. Were the engagement letters sent out as far as to anybody that had anything to do with the city as far as any kind of work we had done, anything randomly chosen throughout this audit process where an engagement letter was sent out to that particular? Thank you. Thank you. I'm so sorry. I needed the accent. I needed the accent.
So, Anne, we sent the attorney confirmation and we got their feedback. So we were able to identify that the city had a balance due to them at the end of each fiscal year. Their confirmation also tells us if there's any type of litigation or against the city that could result in a financial loss. For 2022, there was no such automatic reference in their letters. We confirm all bank account balances with the individual banks. And so any differences between their confirmation confirmed balance and the balance that we reported in the report would be reconciled and explained. So the reason that there's gonna be a difference typically is transaction checks and other expenses that did not clear the bank before year end or deposits in transit that have not yet been deposited into the city bank account. So we then reach out to the tax assessor and that's how we audit property taxes, revenue receivable, the money they had in their possession at year end that had not yet been remitted to the city. The same with the sales tax revenue. We can go onto their comptroller's website. We can pull reports and vouch those to letters that you receive monthly from the state. Plus, we can vouch the amounts on those letters and that report to the deposits in the bank. So we're saying that you are high-risk auditing because the controls are ineffective. But there are other alternative procedures that have been performed that can allow us to give you an unmodified audit in your plan.
Okay. Thank you. So the banking statements that you received, the numbers that we received look much different than what you received. I'm gonna go ahead and tell you that and give you a heads up there. So what you received and what you are concluding this audit on is in fact what you received, correct?
But the reason that there could be differences between a monthly report that you are receiving and the information that I received could be that this report is on an accrual basis. And so the monthly reports may be just a snapshot of the activity for that one month. And so, you know, the reports could be prepared on a cash basis and that could be why there's some discrepancies between the final audit and the monthly reports.
Any other council members have questions for Natalie on this report?
All right.
I probably just don't understand on the corrective action plan. When it says, you know, you were talking about the internal controls, but when it says corrective action plan for finding number 2022, 8.1, failure to comply with financial reporting requirements, could you explain what that means? When it says community development block grant?
So that's the federal funding that caused you to be subject to the uniform guidance. You expended more than the 750. Under that, under those audit standards, you have to submit a copy of your report to the Federal Audit Clearing House within nine months of the year end. Obviously, nobody's done that submission, so there is a failure to comply with the financial reporting standards.
And can that affect future judgment?
Anne, it could affect future, it will stay on a future audit for single audit standards until the finding is rendered. And hopefully, with the approval of the report, we'll be able to do that submission later this week. And then that finding would obviously be completed and modified and could not show up again. The problem that you've got is you're only subject to these audit standards for 2022. In 2023, you are below the 750, so some of these reports are not required reports. That's why you don't see them in the 23 report.
Does that make sense that the finding, this audit hasn't been done in terms of, once we approve it in terms of? And since everybody might not know, the grant money that we're talking about was used for the drainage project over in Valley Lodge.
So if this is a draft and you're recommending changes, have those changes been made in this draft? Otherwise, we have no idea or we have no business approving a draft until we see a final audit report. Are you suggesting that it's not final?
This is the final audit report subject to tonight's approval. So if there are changes or if you spot something that you would like changed, I can change it a bit like the minutes issue earlier in the meeting. You could approve it then, subject to those changes being made.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, there was no other letters sent out to verify other than to the attorney that you mentioned earlier?
The attorney, the banks, the property, the tax assessor, those are typically the, because the tax assessor is the main source of income for the city. And obviously, the sales tax we can get from the portal that the comptroller has available. But there are no other letters in terms of, you know, the landscaping company or anything like that.
There's no other letters at all sent out?
No.
Okay.
All right, council, do we have a motion to approve? Or whatever motion you want to make. Thank you. Justin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, call in favor?
Hi. Hey.
Natalie.
I'm sorry, I'm just gonna go. Okay. So for those three, if you were saying no, what do you need to be added or what questions do you have to additionally ask now?
When can you, well, let me back up. What information are you outstanding as far as the GLO is concerned? Because in 2022, there was a $1.2 million grant that was administered that does require a grant administrator and all that good stuff, which I believe was still in place at that point. That should have been administered, it appears, at least by your statement anyway, that that letter was not sent for affirmation to make sure that those grant monies were spent halfway? If it was, and I misunderstood you, I apologize. I'm just saying, I would like, how much time and what other further information do you need to make this complete without?
It says complete.
But you're saying it's complete with what you got?
Right.
So.
So the GLO grant originally back in, let me find the disclosure.
It's page 29, I think.
So originally, in the year, the fiscal year end, September 2020, the GLO awarded the city 1.2 million.
Just allow her to finish, please.
Go ahead.
So it was in two grant forms. There was a 2026 flood grant and then there was the Hurricane Harvey flood grant. And the total of the two grants from the GLO was 1.2 million dollars. Of that amount, there was a certain proportion of that 1.2 that was expended in 2021's fiscal year. And in 2022, 821,000 was expended in that year. In 2023, there was another dollar amount expended and not all of the grant forms that you were originally awarded were received or necessarily expended. So based on correspondence and confirmations that was done in prior year audits, remembering that we're doing subsequent events testing through the date of the audit, those tests were done to gain support and be able to conclude that the information was correct. The grant was a reimbursable grant, so you earned that money when you submitted the appropriate documentation to the GLO. And the GLO at that point would have had the opportunity to have rejected any expense that did not pass their requirements for reimbursement. But there was not a full amount, the full amount that was awarded was not the full amount of the total project over the three years.
It was also not the amount we, it was also not the amount we asked for. We were granted 1.227232. The funds we asked for were 821,289. Funds received were 821,289. During the year end, we came back and received 219. That's only 1.04 million dollars.
Well, the 219 is actually a different grant from a different government agency. And that is COVID money from the Department of Treasury. That's the money that is restricted. That's the money that you are spending to renovate City Hall. That's got nothing to do with the other.
No, no, I apologize. I'm not trying to cut you off. But in your report, on page 29, you have that in the year ending September 30th of 2020, we received from the Texas General Land Office 1.2727.
You received grant approval.
Right. And then we asked for 821, we got 821. Then during the year ending of September 30th, the city received an additional 219. That's only $1 million.
During the year ended September 30th of 2022, the city received 219,475 from the United States Department of Treasury as a sub recipient. These funds were not spent during fiscal year and are classified as restricted net assets at year end.
Yes, and that is what we spent on City Hall. And that was considered the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA project. But again, we did not recover the entire 1.2 million.
You didn't recover the entire amount?
I mean, we didn't even recover a little over $400,000 or right at $400,000 on that project. So this to me is, I just need an explanation as to why in the future, before we can call it done.
Okay, so in the 2023 audit report, the city received another 242,294 from the GLO in relation to these grant forms. And so because it was a grant that spanned three fiscal years, maybe there is something we can add to the disclosures that would make you more comfortable with the wording?
It's not, it's not the wording, it's the actual money coming in, money going out, as well as the explanation of when those monies were spent. Any grant requires a grant administrator and we have to explain where we spent that money and all that good stuff. Right, I know you mean that. But it doesn't explain that in our audits.
So Courtney, books are.
So we go back to.
If you would.
With all due respect, I was talking now.
Okay, well, I'm Maryam Jettin. Thank you. The grants are handled by administrator and the city. And each of those grants were followed through and had to go through what's called a closeout meeting with the GLO and all of the required teams. And you can't have a closeout completed unless you've met the requirements. So if some information needs to be available, Natalie has.
We did review the project documents.
And it states in your report, with all due respect, the city is required to submit timely audits, financial information electronically to the Federal Audit Clearing House for the nine months of the city's fiscal year end, which you found as a whole doing, which in my opinion, if we are going to approve anything, it needs to have that fixed and then we can approve it.
So this, the way that it works in the audit report is that we have written it up as a finding and we're disclosing it as a finding. And there is an anticipated completion date so that that finding can be met, which we thought that day has been September 30th of 2025 because the fiscal year of 2024 has already passed. So the next time that you potentially could be subject to uniform guidance could be in 2025.
But wouldn't it be still within guidance, need to be within that nine-month period?
The report is late and we're acknowledging that by writing you a, it has to stay in the report. I can't submit this without approval.
But could you submit it with changes?
I could submit, I can not submit it without the city's approval. If there are changes to be made, I can discuss the changes, but I'm not sure what changes you have requested needs made.
All right, and I guess that's, that's kind of my initial question to you is, what changes or what further information did you not receive from the city? And of course, you may not know that, but your number, the numbers that you're showing here are significantly lower than what we show as what we see as assets of the city and monetary figures in the bank accounts. So that's my question to you is what information do you need?
What numbers you're referring to?
I'm talking about total assets.
Capital assets or?
I'm talking about the whole thing.
So all of the banks were confirmed. So the one point, let me go back.
You show a little over $2 million in the bank. We show 3.2.
At what date?
At this date and then consequent years.
I am going with the confirmations that the banks sent for all accounts that have been identified as assets of the accounts of the city. The ISIS, the Cedars, the Wallace Bank, the Money Market, the Grant Bank, all with New First Bank. They totaled 1.5 million as unrestricted banks, bank accounts. The 219 has been reported as restricted cash and cash equivalents because that's the money that you like to do the renovation at City Hall. The tax ball accounts, we have 342,821, that's under the investments line. That was confirmed with tax ball. The property tax receivables was confirmed with the tax assessor. The amount due from the tax assessor was confirmed with the tax assessor. Other receivables is the Fort Bend cap number eight money that there was a time difference on when that was received. And you've got into funds between the general fund and the two component units. So I'm not sure what else is missing in terms of capital assets. They were all fully depreciated and there was no expense identified. and there was no expense identified in the year that met the criteria to be capitalized and expensed over a lifetime.
We don't need one point two million dollars.
So are other council members, um, firms? Do you have? I'm sorry. Um, I think, now, do you have specific questions for Natalie? Or has she answered what your question was?
In saying yes, what about, how does that affect compliance?
Once we get approval, we can go back tomorrow. I can do the first part of the F A C submission. Then Nadine Dru will do the, the, like, her part of the submission. And then you will be considered in confinement caught up as of, hopefully, the twentieth percent of twenty twenty-four, and back in confinement. But that, I mean, none of this really is a surprise to anyone. The numbers may be different, but the controls have been hacked in. For a number of years, we mentioned that in our last audits, that the controls were there. We just need to get you caught up with good controls and good procedures. And with the assistance of the external bookkeeper that's been engaged, that's looking likely to happen by the end of, you know, the next, the current fiscal year that you're in, twenty twenty-five, should be caught up, everything through one view, good controls and good procedures. And so that's why that date is the anticipated completion date.
So in voting yes, we allow compliance. We're giving a box. And that's a script in that, but if they vote no, then that's, you, you can't.
We remain out of compliance until we have an approved audit. Excellent. I know, so you have a, I'm in the danger of. She verifies all of the things herself and not just rely on me providing.
I understand Courtney is. I know, but not wanting to, it's because we, we are so far behind always on our financials, and we really, what we were told before, the, the numbers really differed a lot. But, um, you know, he's done a thorough job. Appreciate it.
Kelly, do you have any further questions?
I don't know.
Okay. Counsel, do we have a different or a new motion? On this twenty twenty fiscal year, twenty twenty-two audit?
Can we include in the motion to be sure that the revisions are made and that we can find it?
There are no revisions at this point.
No, we should have a specific.
Something we have not.
So it would be to just accept this, but this, even though it says grant, it is correctly. It's not.
It's only done, so how will this?
It's on my box until you check it.
Okay, so we have a motion on this side.
Can anybody make a motion, or does it have to be?
No, the previous motion is.
It's already there.
So having a new motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
We have three. Are you planning on opening or staying just because? Can you, did you hear that, Nancy? Did you hear that baby's been up saying? All right, thank you. So audit is approved. Next, in your, um, spinner, five oh E, is the invoice. Choose. Pay for that audit? Uh-oh, check and see if I had it out of order. Specialty for twenty twenty-two. I'm a little step gap. I might have lost my focus around looking at the one point one two.
I don't know.
Okay, seventeen thousand. Seventeen thousand eight fifty-five and thirty-one cents. For the fiscal year twenty twenty audit, which is what we were expecting when we were engaged, we have that. It is budgeted in.
Yeah.
It's budgeted in one hundred dash ten dash five two five two in the fiscal budget. We reserve thirty-five thousand dollars in the budget for two year audits, twenty-two and twenty-three. That's the cover money that we talked about. And so we're rolling the budget to approve that invoice, which is number one four two seven eight. Okay, I'm sorry, you have a question about the invoice?
Uh-huh, for Natalie. Um, originally, it was going to be like eight thousand dollars. Could I have your explanation as to why it's so expensive?
Yeah, for twenty-two, twenty-two was maybe eight thousand dollars. Originally, when we were first engaged for twenty nineteen.
I think it was farther back than that, twenty eighteen.
The last, last year, it was supposed to be.
Originally, it was supposed to be eight thousand dollars, but the previous city administrator failed to tell us that you have implemented T M R S and other post-employment benefits. The original budget was based on having proper accounting software with books and reports, and not having to, uh, apply alternative means to complete an audit. That eight thousand dollars was back for that year. Twenty twenty-two was always, the engagement letter was always seventeen five plus at pocket expenses. And that's the, the invoice that you have in front of you.
So we're paying a lot because the books were not integrated.
Well, you're paying a lot because it was not, not a normal audit, so to speak, because the funding not being used. Because of the T M R S disclosures, because you're subject to single boards and standards, and it just takes time.
Any further discussion? All right, do we have a motion on this invoice?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you opposed to him?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, motion carries. All right, item D. This is audit, uh, presentation of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We will consider to take action to approve the same.
So for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, it is an unmodified audit opinion. In our opinion, our natural statements are very material, statement and error. This year was not subject to the single audit standards. It's the standard audit of state and local governments. Um, so some of the reports in the twenty twenty-two report are not necessarily, are not required in the twenty twenty-three audit because of the standards that were followed. Um, however, you know, in this year, to bring to Courtney's point, in twenty twenty-two, we do have a net investment in capital assets, which was the new roof that was put on at City Hall. There was approximately eighteen hundred dollars of the restricted cash that was expended. Um, that was with, uh, Langford, which is the contractor that you engaged to assist with the City Hall renovations. So those expenses were included in the documentation provided. I think six thousand was appropriated of that two nineteen. Um, but it is, in our opinion, an unmodified audit opinion. I don't know if you have any questions on this report?
I'm gonna ask you the same.
We're gonna give everybody else a chance. Um, any questions for Natalie? Just yet, we do that. Come. Okay. Okay, ma'am.
I'm gonna do the same thing here on this one. This one was a significantly different year for us, um, unbeknownst to you, I'm sure. So, uh, who, did you get this information from?
Again, uh, Julie, um, and some information, because remember, the previous audits that were conducted, previous three that we did, we presented those in September of twenty twenty-three. A lot of information for subsequent events that's then was provided by the city and the city administrator to close out those audits. So there may have been holes in the information back then, but those holes were filled when we were conducting the audit. So it's a combination of the previous employees and the assistants, Julie.
When?
Throughout.
As of, as, I'm sorry, as of May of this year.
As of May, this year.
According to your office and the mayor, you were still waiting on information from ours, ours. So you received this information between May and now?
Yes.
From a previously administrator or manager?
From Julie.
Only from Julie, okay. And then, um, why does this particular audit, why is it missing over a hundred thousand dollars that was paid off from employees that left?
I don't know what you're talking about. Um, every payment that was identified as payroll was reported as payroll. Every transaction, IRS transactions were, you know, picked up from the bank statements. We are showing that there is eighteen thousand six sixty-one according to our reconciliations that is due to the IRS. There was an inadvertent overpayment on the T M R S contributions that is shown as a receivable. Um, but the payroll was reconciled back to the payroll reports provided by the city.
So this year, best of what you received?
Yes.
Is the best that can be done, correct?
Right.
Just as a.
Is there any further questions?
Gloria, I got a question for you. Is there a reason that the number only shows two point three, and you've always showed us three point two?
Well, since I'm not aware of what you're referring to, I can answer.
Every.
I don't have a comparison, I don't.
Every budget in this book, every budget in last year's book shows that we have a, a, a net position of three point, upwards of three point two million dollars.
And if I shouldn't tell me what you call might be missing, I'm so sorry, I don't have reference to that. What I have done is make sure we've given everything that we asked for. We make sure she has every, printed out every report, accessed every place that she directly confirms on her own.
Why does she not have? Why doesn't she have the payout from Jennifer America?
She just will be at all of them.
I did see a very large payout in the books, and it is included in here. Included in the administrative fees and expenses. That's where payroll and payroll taxes are recorded. Now, that's not the full, that's not the full payroll figure, because that includes the admin expenses. But payroll is included in the administrative fees and expense line also.
Okay. Counsel, do we have a motion on this audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion.
All right, any further discussion? I'm not trying to rush you to do the questions while the expert's here. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, the audit is approved. Next, item D, consider to take action to approve invoice number one four two seven nine for performance of this audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The amount of fifteen thousand three seventeen and thirty-one cents. Do we have a motion? We're discussing. Y'all have questions?
I'm wondering why this one was even higher.
Especially two thousand.
It's two thousand less.
Is it, is it less?
Oh, okay.
It's less than you have. Yeah, it's okay.
It's less because it goes in subject rules of the case.
Oh, I see.
Something on my head. Okay, I have one, hold it for a second.
Committee members.
Laurie, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Firm's. Thank you, motion carries. Item F, is the.
I'm sorry, may I apologize? We only reported four votes, did you ask for names?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't ask if she volunteered it.
Oh, we did.
Councilor Austin says no. Sorry about that.
We didn't hear her reporting.
Yeah, I'm saying. All right, item F. They consider to take action to approve audit proposal for fiscal year end twenty twenty-four. Um, this is a proposal letter from your boss, saying all may dispute this. Now, do you have any comments or?
Um, I have been in a communication with the bookkeeper, the summer bookkeeper. Um, as of yesterday, they wrote the opinion that you should not be subject to the single audit standards. Um, and so the engagement letter is for a standard state and local government audit. There's no special requirements for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion on this engagement for fiscal year twenty twenty-four?
Eddie, Natalie, excuse me, can you explain what that might mean? As far as we wouldn't be required to do that, certain type of. As far as we wouldn't be required to do that, certain type of, the audits that were done were?
So the 2024 audit report is expected to look very similar to the 2023 audit report. And 2022 was an anomaly because of the federal funding that was expended in that year.
You realize we've spent a lot of money in this last year, right?
Yeah, it depends where the source, the original source of the money is coming from. If it's, you've spent a lot of money in terms of property taxes and service tax revenue.
We've spent the ARPA project.
Pardon?
We spent the money on the ARPA project.
So we haven't spent all the money, however, the threshold is $750,000, am I right?
Yeah.
So we have not, the whole project will not be $750,000.
Or the standards.
So what does that mean, what does that look like in the form of costs, is my question?
So in the, in our past, we've estimated $15,000, $17,000 was out of pocket expenses, our costs have gone up unfortunately.
On the future audits?
Yes, for 2024.
You're saying that that's going to be our continued cost?
Yeah.
So counsel, we ask for a motion. Do we have that for the proposal for 2024? All right, we don't have a motion. Do you have further questions?
Can we revisit that at a later date when we get a little bit more comfortable with the Eddie Peacock situation? Because we haven't had an accounting firm for years. And to her point, our situation has been a little dire. And now that we maybe are in some form of reconciliation, can we talk about this before we talk about moving forward there?
Counsel could choose not to accept the proposal. The longer that we delay, the farther out we become. And then we are in our same situation where our audits are not timely. The fiscal year has already, that this audit will apply to, has already closed in September. So.
We've also not seen the finances for that though.
And when the audit will expose every single thing there is to see, which is what you can see with the two years approved.
I didn't approve any, but well, they didn't.
To your point. Everyone listed, so. Let's let that go for right a second for terminology. Um, if you choose not to engage with Reba tonight, there is the action plan of what is that going to be? If we were to go ahead and agree now, my understanding of talking to Natalie is that our audit could begin, I was gonna say December, but we're already in December. In January, which gives us the goal then being to present that in the spring approximately next. Am I saying that right? Timing. So that we get back on regular typical cycle of when audits happen so that they are flowing prior to the next fiscal year closing. Do y'all have questions?
I don't have a question.
Okay.
Laurie, I make a motion to accept this.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any who would like to abstain? And those opposed?
Myself. How can we not under, how can we not understand the city's finances as they are in this report? Before we approve that, and no offense to you, it's not that I don't want to approve that. It's, I feel like in order to be able to drive you the most information, we need to understand what this new accounting firm is having to say before we approve.
I appreciate that, but right now we just engaged in all of them. That's, that's all we're doing.
We're gonna end up paying $30,000 before it's all over. This is an act-
Councilmember Cox, please abstain. Thank you very much for coming to present the audits and all the hard work of getting here for two, two years. This will be right on the path going forward.
Okay, can I just get the letter signed?
Yes.
Do you need copies or?
Well, just a second while I sign these.
These are the representation letters that you and, or two councilors have sent.
Okay.
One that could change.
There's a whole different contract for 2024.
Can I take a photo?
Thank you. All right, thanks everybody for holding on to this. Item G. This is the annual billing statement for Impress computers. They provide all of our service, monitoring, security, software if needed, service calls if necessary. The good news about this is that we were able to do kind of a review of services provided, email addresses being used and, um, necessary needs. You'll see that second, so the reason they have two attachments is the one that says original billing. For $14,919, this will be submitted based on email addresses we own and the equipment that we have that was being serviced. We've been able to, I don't use the word idle, it's probably not right there, but we have idle. Some computers that are not being used now that will when we have additional employees or if we ever need a machine. We've been able to cancel some email addresses that are not being used and haven't been used. For example, when we had a part-time employee that came on and then left shortly, that email address still existed and we're paying on that. So we've been able to reduce the liability on that from $14,000 and change $14,919 to almost $50,000 to $11,613 for 2025. So this is in the budget. This service is in the budget and something that we have every single year. I really wanted you to see that we were able to reduce our cost by $3,000 and make sure counsel is approving before we finally agree with it and pay them for the next year.
This is for four years.
This is annual.
This is for four years. It says 10/1/2024 from 9/30 of 2028.
So what is mine?
And all of the other ones say consequently 2027. So this is a four-year or three-year contract in all lines existing on original or revised billing. Is it a one-year contract or is it a four-year contract?
Different, uh, different services like Microsoft, different line items. We pay for those services and they may have a longer contract because when you sign up for annual subscriptions, they could be longer than just the one year.
So for example, when you went to Microsoft 365 and canceled pay, you'd longer agreements. We only pay for it one year at a time.
So this is an annual agreement, but it's just giving us what the renewal dates, how long we have those specific services. How long have we had Impress? How long is it usually?
I really need to go back and look. I think we started with that in 2019 or 20, but I, I should go back and verify that. All right, counsel, do we have a motion?
Why do we have six, five computers? One, two, three.
Because we have staff in the office and we also have emergency operations computers. And that's why they're not all at the same level of service or don't all have the same things.
So we're paying for 11 emails, 10 business standard Microsoft accounts, five desktop monitorings. And according to this, it does say in one spot that it is a one-year contract, Julie's pointing. But then directly underneath that, it says this is a four-year contract. This one's a three-year contract, three-year contract, three, 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 three. One, one, and one. For 11 emails, who in the world is getting the city? I don't get emails from the city.
And you do not have an email address of the city, right?
I, I, well, I mean, we don't have to live on emails, do we?
There were 19 addresses and now we've reduced that by permanently deleted, deleting ones that would absolutely not be used.
So with some of the emails, for example, we still had to keep the previous city administrator and the city secretary's emails monitored and archived. They don't have access to them, but we have to be able to have those emails available to us for public information requests, for different things. So some of those emails are included in that. Even though they're not active, they're still being, um, I wish I had a verbiage that they pull.
I know, I understand what you're saying, like archive.
Archives, so they are, they are part of the 11, even though they're not actively being used.
So do we-
We also have addresses like info, which a general question can go to info@sony.com. So it's not just three addresses.
So we pay them and Archive Social and the web address guy and the, all these things? Or is this all in one?
No.
Because we're paying a lot of services here.
Impress, Impress computer is our security, our, if we have a problem with our computers, if we need a new email address created, um, if we, Laurie, can you chime in? I mean, it's, it's our security, it's our network, it's our monitoring, um, yeah.
Items like Archive Social is something completely different because that is specific to social media and keeping and retention.
And it is in fact a one-year contract, not a four like is listed on this invoice.
Correct. This is the reason.
Why is it listed as a four?
If you look under shift two in the very center at the top, it says annual statement for 2024, 2025.
It says it was due 10/31.
It's late because I've held it over for negotiation and to bring it to counsel instead of just executing something because it's-
Do we have a contract with them already for those years? Is that why that, that date is listed to begin with? Because it says contract, contract, contract in those amounts.
That could, that would be, Julie's the one that spoke to him, so let me tell you what I think it is and correct me if I'm wrong.
Do we just have a contract with them?
That's what she was just talking about, saying that some of those run for, let's say, five years. So your service agreement that they've taken out on our behalf or that services us for Microsoft 360, for example. That's why they're giving us what those dates are.
What about where it says on the second one there where it says Microsoft 365 quantity 10? Is that Microsoft 365 on 10 devices?
Yeah. So let's say I have a cell phone and a laptop. And Julie has a desktop. And so it, it's more than just three machines because it includes anything that we're doing email on. And these, this package of information also includes the computers that are for emergency operations. Someone we deploy, come in, you see the laptops all of, from various departments, they have people. And they help me with areas of.
I use 365, but I have never dropped that off, hanging it on my phone.
You don't have to pay for it on your phone, babe?
10 devices. Okay. Thanks, David. We do, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Disagreeing, ma'am.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry.
It's reported, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry. She said any opposed, I said, sorry.
Great.
Who is the second commander for Paul?
I didn't announce it, but the actual math on that was $3,306 in savings. Thank you, so appreciate that. All right, financial reporting update. To your point about, I said this would be our catch-up meeting. Peacock, I always want to say my words, so please forgive me if I say the wrong animal, but Peacock Accounting, that counsel previously engaged to help us make sure that we have some additional controls, we have experts on the case for accounting since we do not have enough staff or expertise, is working out, they are working very diligently. They have worked directly with Natalie, which she mentioned. Julie can probably give you a much better recap about that. But the first section about Eddie Peacock has been engaged in working on the reconciliations for fiscal year 2024. That just ended in September, I'm sorry, in, yeah, in September. And that is the audit that just engaged Reba to work on. They are utilizing FundView, they are willing to teach. And so Julie has learned a lot already. And they have a docket of items they are going to work on after the first of the year. Education items. They're working on the credit card reconciliation and payroll reconciliation for the full year. And their budget adjustments for fiscal 2024. Do you have anything to add about the budget adjustments? That's not, I, I can't give you more definition about that, but if you've got anything to add to Julie about them and what you guys have been working on, that would be great.
Okay, so Peacock has been reconciling, I need to use the correct terminology, every, every account that this city has. Um, meaning it's the credit card reconciliation, the payroll reconciliation. All of the accounts are now placed into the FundView system to where we can generate the protected recording and also Natalie in the future can utilize the system. Uh, that's a process. It's a process to get everything in there and to be reconciled. When I spoke to Nicola with Eddie Peacock, she is at, this was last week. She was at 90% reconciliation. Meaning it's not 100% because she had a few other pieces that she has to audit and reconcile to make sure that we have placed everything into the FundView system. She has given me an update that by the next council meeting, she will have the year reconciled and we will have a complete report for you. Um, and then also going forward with educational and creating templates and getting things done, you will also be provided with the monthly September, October, November monthly reporting during that council meeting. And going forward, you will be provided with a report every month because they will be reconciling- reconciling the months on a monthly basis. So we are, we shouldn't have a gap in them reconciling because they are at their party and they are very familiar with FundView, they work with FundView, and we have engaged with them to reconcile all of the months and also support the city as well.
So I promise we can't do that because we're not quite ready because they're not quite finished. And what they, what we have provided to you, and it says 9% reconciled on the top, this is the revenue and expense report as of September 30th, with the disclaimer that they're finishing the last reconciliations to make sure there's not a simple thing yet captured. So this can, can give you an inclusion of September, you haven't received that separately yet, but it will be in January. So they've committed to be finished in plenty of time, I don't see plenty of time, but they'll be finished in real time. Each of those months promised, that's in the cover page and the change we just mentioned for September, which is the last month of that fiscal year, and then October, November. So we'll get back on our regular cadence of, probably, you need a 134, we're ahead of that in January. So we won't have multiple months considered at one time.
Will it be running between them and stuff?
And January will not be running behind because we are going to be providing September, October, and November, which that's what we would have provided.
But will.
So moving in over today.
Your still on the rear is going to be correct because they also need time to reconcile the work.
One thing not specifically called out, but I know, well, I think we all, we have to look at some items, is that they are, for the first time, entering each separate account that we have, that we first in as its own account in FundView. So to date, it's been all of our actual annual budget and our wallet's bank information, where the credit cards, that can all be reconciled in there. And now they have the expertise in on the purpose to add all the rest of those bank accounts. So all of those reports can be run from one source and then matched up to the accounts for they receive each entity, and that'll be this whole year for auditing and for information at our end.
Are you the one that keeps in contact with them? How did they, how did they obtain this information? Do they have access to FundView now or?
She, yes, definitely have access to FundView.
Okay.
Are, you know, reconciling things into the system. They do contact me if they need any information. As far as the reconciling, they are provided statements and they are uploading and reconciling into the fund accounting and doing all of the things. I am their main source, Lori, as well, but as far as questions, they typically reach out to me.
Okay, the only reason I ask is because in the previous meetings, we had talked about moving some stuff from miscellaneous into the various, you know, I hate to use the word buckets because it bothers me, but into the various categories or ledgers that they needed to be moved into. And I did note that some of those have been done according to this 90% reconciliation, but then there's a lot missing.
Well, there is going to be some information missing because I have been emailing her some entries to make, to be made, just because of lack of, you know, lack of known assistance. So she is CPA, she is putting those in as they are identified and again, we give them constant communication to make sure we get everything reconciled, up to date, and that's where Julie has been.
Is there a category in the 2024 budget that you're noticing for sure?
Yes, there's a lot of them actually. There's some other expenses in the general fund that still note about $5,200, not a lot, but it's over budget by $2,700 that is still elicited miscellaneous, so just curious as to that. But my biggest question is this, in our most recent, and I'm going to go back loosely here. So the last time that we got financials, there was a questionable ARBIRA payment, somewhere in the neighborhood of a $92,000 check that was paid out. And it was listed, I want to say in around the middle of September, which should be reconciled in this if this is 90%, and it's not showing anywhere near that cost or expense.
I'm going to have to go back to my record, I don't have it and I didn't bring my computer.
I can, I can bring you my, I mean, it was, it was brought up and we were kind of questioning that whole, I thought, I thought we were done paying them type thing, and it is not listed in any of the, I mean, even the attorney fees are, are kind of low based on the bills that Mr., that Mr. Phil sent me over there.
Look at those two things, oh yeah.
Yeah, like the incident response only shows a certain amount, it doesn't show the complete amount of facilitating the pumps. There's still random amounts, capital improvement is way over budget, so just, those are my questions. I was, I was curious as to who's communicating that with them.
Yeah, I am working with Peacock and providing information and scanning banks over.
Okay.
Any further questions, council, about that? All right, moving on, there's no action for council to take on that, but we're moving on to item high, discuss and take action to appoint two new members to keep Simonton Beautiful Commission. Kelly, would you like to speak to that?
Say, wouldn't that just be you?
You don't have to.
Wouldn't that just be you?
We have elected Abby Ferguson as well as Erica Molina to join our Keep Simonton Beautiful Board, and we look forward to working with both of you. Both of y'all will need to come in and talk to Ms. Nigetie B. Sworn and then, provided that the council approves those two members.
Thank you. So at this point, the action, we're, council, to accept the recommendations from Keep Simonton Beautiful to appoint Abby Ferguson and Erica Molina to Keep Simonton Beautiful. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Justin and Burns, thank you.
That's not just me making decisions, that's you.
Council makes the appointment.
But we're not, you do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, unanimous, thank you. Abby, thank you for serving. Erica is working late today and, thank everybody. Item J, discuss and take action regarding Resolution 2024-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simonton, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute settlement release documents with retail pharmacy Kroger as an additional settling party within the National Opioid Settlement Participation Previously Autorized by the State.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So roughly about 2021, the city voted to enter into the national settlement agreement. So just as a reminder of what this is, and many probably understand in this generally that the opioids was seen as sort of a national problem, the victim nature, et cetera, et cetera. And so the AGs of multiple states got together and decided to collaboratively sue, thus calling it the National Opioid Settlement Participation Agreement, to sue together those opioid developers, distributors, et cetera, because of the harm it's causing to the nation, individual cities, to the states, et cetera. In 2021, the initial sort of agreement came out and the city entered that, which at the time didn't necessarily have named participants on the other side because it was still developing. There was also a rate sheet developed in which each city and county was determined to have a certain amount of funds that would be given to that city to sort of help alleviate the crisis to be used for certain purposes like health and safety of the community, whether it's new, you know, defibrillators or something along those lines. Simonton at the time was marked for $1,906, which is, you know, free money, so we won't argue with it. Well, since then, others have joined, other industries have joined the agreement, and Kroger for the most recent has joined. So all this action does is the city in essence acknowledged and accepts that Kroger has joined this national agreement and will, and the AG will continue to lead the effort to get these settlements. The, the other part about the resolution that's probably more important and why it really matters for some cities is that some cities have individual lawsuits against the distributors or Kroger, things like that. Simonton does not, but this includes a waiver or backing out if you had an individual suit. It's missing that. Again, Simonton doesn't have an individual suit against Kroger, so this is just acknowledging that Kroger is now part of the agreement and they, they will continue to be part of that agreement and allowing Kroger to join in that settlement.
Thank you. So council, do we have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the settlement release? Thank you, Burns and Justin. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Item K, discuss and take action regarding City Hall Expansion Project, which is the ARPA grant money project. I included specifically about the ADA approved construction. There is no specific action on the site, but I wanted to give you an update about where we are and changes that have already been in play and what we're anticipating coming up. So council, in your email copy you got last week, you have a page that is in your binder. I've added a copy of it that was loose when you got here, it's on the outside of your binder, it has a little bit more information than Kenny had since we sent your packet. Just to illustrate that, we've had four change orders and an architecture expense come up. So the first change order was around plumbing, it was very, such a shallow fashion, it had to be resolved, lots of digging, and the backup that's attached to this explains exactly where it was and the specific work done to remedy the situation. You'll find four of those change orders, they give you all that detail. That costs $2,999. The second change order was a water line to accommodate future use by the city. It will have a line fail, this is already installed and available. Also digging around our fiber optic line for our high-speed internet, AT&amp;T, also was installed extraordinarily shallow, so there was extra work around that that wasn't in the original bid, that cost $2,000. Change order three is revisions to the HVAC system. Fortunately, this was recommended by the AC and D contractor, HDC. We were able to reduce $15,750 related to balancing. The work for that will be done during the install and so paying an extra $15,000 for it doesn't make sense, and they were on the spot to help us make sure that we capture that. Am I recapping that correctly, Shannon?
Okay.
Great. Change order number four was reusing the existing council boards, knowing we have some very nice solid wood doors that are matching throughout City Hall. The original, I'm going to call it a bit, but the original plan was for some new doors and aren't going to be to be replaced. So by saving those and using them in the moved over entrance, we saved them $800. And the last item from L, Architecture, that's an additional fee for some revisions that had to be done to address the requirement for an ADA accessible bathroom, and that is related to the increase in capacity at City Hall within larger size of the chamber. Our portion of that expense is $3,600 for items that were bid, but we, that were not charged to us because that work wasn't done originally. So you'll see on your attachment that's specific to the architect firm, that LJA was good enough to agree to take part of that expense, an additional $1,267, and I believe that LO took a portion of the expected cost. You can see those costs in IMV, Project Athies. So we were able to help, with their help, work around some of that additional expense. So $3,600 is our portion of that. That is a net, a net impact to the planned expense of a credit of $7,951 so far.
Our original bid, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So the original contract amount is at the top of that page, the change order impact budget is listed there, and so then you get that net of credit, $7,951.
Did we change the contract amount unbeknownst to council? Because our original contract amount was less than 220 for the entire project. And then after that, we added the building or the painting.
I think you could be thinking of the original ARPA award money. And then council approved additional funds in order to get to a total of $295,000.
It was 140 plus 76,5, I remember exactly, because we pulled to 76 and then another 40 when we added the painting of the building from EDCA and EDCB, so it was 220. And now you're saying it's 295.
I think your numbers are not correct, but again, since I didn't have the question, I don't have that data in front of me, but we'd be happy to go pull it out of the.
One second, I'll pull the bit tab.
Sorry, Shannon, go ahead.
I'll pull up the bit tab in a second.
Thank you. So I'll give you some further explanation, but Shannon is here to really help address what's going on. We, we, and I think I mentioned this last month, we've realized that we require members to have an ADA or disability accessible restroom is applied because of the extra capacity in the council chambers. So the architectural plans have been drawn, we received them yesterday, I believe, Shannon and LJA are giving us the final review of that, and then it'll be set to Bureau of Fairness, just like everybody else is, for approval. And then our construction project could begin to restart. However, we don't have, and you can see that on your adjusted net and optional items at the bottom, we don't have yet what that additional cost is going to be for that bathroom. So I'll be back to talk to you more about that unless it's not over what we have in the budget to spend, maybe in the next week hopefully, I'll be back to tell you more about it and what should be announced. The anticipated items that are in that next block on your sheet, the remobilization category, that's a expense of $3,000, and that is caused by the delay of this project. We listed out there what most of those items are, we've worked on everything we can to get rid of that cost and negotiate it down, and that is, that is just the cost, and that is, cost of that dumpster that's sitting there, the Ford of Camp, the other equipment that could be returned in order to not continue to pay rental on it, was returned, but we pay some pickup fees, there'll be some redelivery when the project gets restarted, like the system lift, it'll be required to install lights and the new garage bay, things like that. So that one's coming at us. The next one, the council bench facade, the photo that I included that is paperclip to that update, that you can't figure out, why did I give you a picture of somebody's patio? The ceiling material that was used on that project, there is more of it, it was an overrun, and it's available to us to, if we would like it, to put on the front of the new dais. Currently, the project is, I'm sorry, it's free. It's not free. It would be $985, but it's listed on that line. Right, it's already, I bet you have one, or you haven't, it's been refinished, refilled, ready to use if you'd like to have it. In the project right now is four mites to be across the front of that dais. So it's not wood that we had before, it's, it could be some solid color, then that'd be awful, but that's what it's back for right now. So that would be an upgrade, it's purely cosmetic, we're going to be looking at that for a long, long time, so I want you to be able to see a visual of what that would look like. And it's an option. It seemed like a no-brainer when we didn't have this overrun happening on this bathroom, but that's there for your consideration, and we could take action on it tonight if you wanted to.
Who signed that?
We did.
We did.
It's us, the contractors, who made all sign that.
Let's take a pause for a second. So Shannon's got to sign contract totaling $295,575.72 for the construction of the Sunset City Hall renovations. Which matches the $295,000 number that's at the top of this page as our original contract amount.
By Craig?
Craig Contractor. I don't know y'all actually, so much.
We had to approve it. We didn't approve $295,000 to my knowledge. Can you tell me who signed that, that final, or first document, not the final one? Cause I know I was asked to sign it.
I think that was the emergency plan with the county that we asked you to sign.
That was the one that you
Either way, it's not on the agenda. So let's bring that one in, but. Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome. Email it to me, all right, Shannon? I appreciate it.
What we should do is make that an information request. I mean, it can be from you just to Yes, Ricky. I mean, what you asked for is right here.
I don't know. I asked you in the last meeting in those minutes, right here, at the very last part. It says that I asked for the update on the roadwork update, zoning update, financial reports update. And that we had talked about the City Hall project.
Great. So we're getting the City Hall update right now. So you'll think about the front of the facade of the bench for a second and we'll come back to that. The last item, sorry, the next last item is upgrade the existing ballast lights in the chambers to, from ballast to LED flat panels. There are nine fixtures. And that would allow us to upgrade in the chamber and put the new ones in that are already in the plan and make the ones that are there today match. It'd be aesthetically pleasing. It would be uniform, you know, a little bit of, and have all the same lights. Since we are facing this bathroom situation that unknown cost, which is the last item. I do need counsel's direction on how you feel about the light fixtures. Some other options are buy ballast fixtures where there's no guarantee that will match what's already there because what we have is of an age. But buy the same sort of fixtures that are there and don't make any change to the current fixtures. And it could probably be close, if not a good match. Another option is to buy LED bulb or certain type you can buy that you don't have to change out the ballast in the fixture itself. I think that can be done for under $500. And so we'll use the fixtures we have. We would change the bulbs to all be LED. We still have a risk, plus you get the new fixtures don't exactly match the old. But that would be a money-saving option if that is your preference. So I'll need to know what direction to go so that once this gets rolling again, we already have some consensus about let's upgrade your light fixtures or let's go with what we have and maybe we spend some extra money later and we need to be upgraded in a separate project. Any thoughts or comments?
Anybody ever noticed a light fixture?
You wouldn't notice it, but if you walk in and there's this section has this and there's that one row of the year ones.
That's really what that I mean, our, our ceiling in there seems to get
Do I hear that? It's, we all like to mean all of this.
Wouldn't that be part of the current project already though? If they're redoing the ceiling as it is, wouldn't they be redoing the lights soon?
No.
So they left out the lights?
They, there's, the lights aren't broken. We didn't ask them to include changing the hydrants. They just included the new lights for the new condition.
Well, what about the damage to the bathroom from the water tank?
That could be something completely separate.
So again, the further expense?
Well, we'll talk about that in a second because it's really not part of this project.
Okay.
Can I say one thing about that? I know it's not, so
I'm sorry, just one second. I think we would, I mean, we would, if we've got a choice like between putting some nice wood in front. Everybody sees that. Or the lights that we really don't pay much attention to there. I think that $500 sounds really nice. I'm always saving money, so.
I'm always
I, I, not necessarily the new fixtures, but you said you could change what you've got LED.
That's my understanding.
I like the LED idea. I, I it's so much better than the, 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 the I mean, I don't suppose you'd like to mess with, you know, it's, it's a lot of that cost. It's a quality issue. So if there's wood, convert those, really, you're talking about.
I think it was the best match on the
Yeah, because I would, what's the age on the ballast?
They could be original. I'm not certain about that. Do we have a comment from an expert?
Yeah, so, so I own a business and we have the old ballast.
If I may, I'm sorry. Let me, so public is allowed to speak on, on the items, but it doesn't need to be your order of public comment. You know, do the three minutes with the, unless they're party to the bathroom. And so I would just, sorry, I apologize. So I just request, state your name, address, and then we'll make sure you're on the three minute timer.
Okay. Susan Mulder, 36730, Calhoun Road. So I own a business and we redid all of our lights because two things. The bulbs that come with those ballast lights are now hanging all to pieces. And typical lights have four of those per. And once they start going out, they go out that quick. So when we replace all the parts, and it does make a huge difference when you walk into a room, the difference between the lighting, the visual part, and it's very distracting when you have some that are extremely different than others. So considering you have, it's a public place where people go into the public. The fluorescent lights are, they're offensively awful. And the LED lights are, they're a cleaner, lighter light. And typically, if you put in a nice one, you can have different colors in them where they're either super bright or they have a little hint of blue, which is very aesthetic. So to me, having changed all of mine out from the old ones to the new ones, it's, it's a huge cost savings overall because you're not gonna buy those bulbs that are extreme when they go out a lot.
Susan, did you change your light fixtures? Did you change your ballast or just so?
We, I changed the entire box. They're, they come in two by four. They come in two by four. I changed every single one of them out that I had before they upgraded the, those bulb, the ballast ones to the newer ones. And they, they're more efficient. They create zero heat and the light is continuous. And you've got, there's nothing to flicker. Cause that flicker can be very distracting. And like I said, those bulbs, once they start to go out and the ballast are difficult to find and they're expensive. So overall, it'll be a cost savings overall.
Thank you.
If the ballast go out, then we have to hire an electrician to replace it, right?
Yes.
And the charge on electrician is going to be
I mean, I, I can, I'd like to save the money, but obviously it can cost us more if they, the ballast as soon as they go out, they're, that's my
The cost on the electrician work, on my preliminary research, as we just found, figured this out, is $300 to $350 and a half. And that's why it seems like such a big number to have a light electrician change out this many times. So if they come out to change one, who does? It could be $600.
I think we're all for LEDs, which, whatever looks good, we'll do it. But LED, not the old, the old fluorescent. And that's what she's talking about.
So just in our hearing, you're saying that if we don't change the ballast out now and use the LED light bulbs, we still run the risk of them going out and we want to fix them.
I'm trying to think, replacing the electrician now. The ballast will go out.
How many light fixtures are there?
I don't know.
This would affect us.
It's actually a great price. My shop, we're replacing 11 for almost 6,000. From the fluorescent balls to LED. As if they would swap them out completely. Because yes, especially if you don't know the age of those balls, they're gonna go out eventually. And LED is so much better.
What are the electricity costs down to?
I think I'm confused and I just want some clarification really quickly. You gave us two documents, one of which included this, one of which included the updated changes in contract price. Both reflect a change, a negative change of $8,000. Why are we talking about this? It's $8,000 less.
That's correct.
So we don't need to take action if we're planning on spending $8,000 less with the upgraded changes that are listed in here.
So number one, to keep counsel apprised of what's going on with the project. And that we're continuing to work hard to save every time we can, but that there are anticipated expenses, which is why you got a second copy.
That's what I'm saying. It shows the same amount.
That's right. I, this is just because I added this because this was late breaking information to get these numbers of the anticipated expenses.
So you are asking us to take action and spend an additional $7,000, $8,000?
I'm not really asking for any action because it all falls within the budget additional.
Cause it says take action. That's what I'm asking.
Right, that's why I said that. There may not be action.
She was asking for incentives.
I'm asking, like, what are we doing? Because it's $8,000 savings here. It's less than that $8,000 of expenditure. So I get what, I agree. I appreciate why you're saying it, but it says take action on our agenda. And if we don't need to take action, then like, let's move.
Okay, well
I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with all of it, but it's like, let's, let's upgrade it and move on. It's within our budget.
Okay, the reason that I'm bringing it up, we're staring down a major change in this bathroom. We're gonna have to push the wall out five feet. We're gonna have to move plumbing to move the sink from one wall to a different wall. There will be shoe drop work. There's gonna be glory that wasn't expected. So once, we don't know what that number is yet. So if I can get your consensus on, do I spend the $3,400 or $3,700 on lighting? It's within the purview, just like you said. I'm not going over budget. If I were to say yes, all three of those items. But I know that this bathroom is staring us in the face and
Can we worry about the bathrooms before we worry about the lighting? So that we have a better idea because the bathroom, the bathroom could come back and be 20. I'm just, I might level that to you here. Bathroom could be, come back, come back and be $20,000. And then we're gonna take a second guess at what lights need to be replaced, I would think. This bathroom was supposed to be ADA compliant to begin with, as it is a one stall bathroom in and of itself to begin with. So if we have to spend an additional 20 or 25 on a bathroom, that's a conversation we need to have versus something that we don't need to spend any money on lights. If I'm understanding, because this is just so, it shows a $3,600 payment for expansion on the, the permit. It doesn't show any cost related to the expansion of the bathroom or the possibility of an expansion to the bathroom.
Those are two different things. That's a proposal for work done. That's not a proposal for contract or for construction done. That's a proposal for design fees.
But that's what I'm saying. So this bathroom expansion could cost us
Yeah, but the construction fee is not gonna be on that proposal. That cost is a completely different cost. That would show up on change orders that are below that proposal. So yeah, we don't have that cost yet because the contractor is still working on it. I can't give you that cost. Only the contractor can. Also, while we're talking about it, I pulled up the minutes from 3/19/2024. Contract price approved being $295,575.72.
But the meetings, the meetings prior to that, we had to go back and approve the additional funds?
Approved contract is $295,575.72. I'm just saying that because that's what's on ours. And like, so if you're saying that's a wrong price or that we changed it, you're saying LJA changed it because we're the ones that keep up with that. We have not changed that. That is what is approved and that's what's been signed.
No, 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 ma'am. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
The $295,575.72 is the contract price and it has not been changed.
That was the contract price that was subsequent after we took money from EDCs, from two EDCs.
I understand that, but you asked the question if the contract price was, has been changed. It was not.
Past that point, past the first initial
It's not a contract price when all you've been giving is a cost estimate. The estimate is not binding. It's a contract price whenever the contract has been bid out, accepted, awarded, and then signed.
So this one didn't include the bathroom, right?
That one includes the bathroom proposal for design fees. It doesn't include the proposal for construction.
So the $295,757 didn't include an ADA permitted bathroom?
Not. Okay, cool.
So the one that you might be thinking of is in the fire bay.
Nope, I'm thinking of the expansion.
It is ADA compliant, but because it's not accessible by the public, that's where this issue has come to light about the capacity inside that's accessible and it requires us to upgrade this bathroom. It was not in the original project. Why?
Good call.
It wasn't identified as a miss.
So we agreed to increase the size of City Hall and didn't think about the size of the bathroom? Or?
We thought about it very clearly and we discussed it, but we did not get information from Euro Veritas or from the architect firm or anybody else who worked on it that
There was gonna be an additional cost.
Overruled. And so now that it's discovered, instead of continuing with the project and then having to tear something out, we've just stopped working on the renovation.
Okay.
Okay, counsel. We may be able to forego making a decision about these, the lighting until after we get the proposal for the bathroom, but we may not. Strictly because we already have at least two months ahead of work, probably closing in on three and a half months of delay. So once this gets restarted, we need to have ordered the light fixtures if we're gonna do it so that contractors can stay on schedule. They've already taken other work. They're gonna have to fix back in. So I'm happy to pursue either go ahead and fix it so we don't shortchange ourselves or tell ourselves to spite our face on being cheap and not doing fixtures now. Or we just have to save that $3,000 and put it towards the bathroom. So let's pursue the bulbs only.
We don't have that in the budget, do we?
This is upgrade existing ballast lights to LED. That's what I would like to do.
Are you talking about the fixtures and the bulbs or just the because I think Kelly and Justin are talking about change out the fixtures and let's do it now instead of waiting till later. I just wanna make sure that's what they're saying.
That's what this is saying.
That's what this $34, whatever, $3,700.
Yeah.
Okay.
So real quick, Lori, out of the budget, when we do get the said amount for the bathroom that is not inclusive in this $295,000 that we've spent on City Hall already, where do we plan on finding that money?
When we know how much it is, right here, recommendation.
So where's the $3,000 and some change coming from for lights?
This credit of $7,951.
So we're not gonna use the $7,951 on the supposed bathroom. It could cost us a bunch of money.
We've just been discussing that. So the $3,000 is non-negotiable. So that's coming out. So that, so we have $4,800 left. I've just gotten consensus from a group to go ahead with the idea of the ballast change out completely, the fixtures to the flat LEDs. And I think I heard y'all say we would like to have a nicer facade since it's gonna be there forever. If, if that's correct. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead with these items. This leaves about $300, I think, that's not spent from the current budget. And counsel will have to decide how we're gonna fund the revisions for the bathroom. And council will have to decide how we're gonna fund the revisions to the bathroom.
So if the bathroom is inoperable, if it is not ADA compliant, why are we deciding about lights versus a bathroom that works?
Because all the council members just discussed it. That's why.
Okay, y'all realize that we won't be able to use city hall for city meetings until that bathroom is ADA compliant, right?
You already can't use it because...
The bathroom is not ADA compliant. So the lights really don't matter whether or not you can use the bathroom, right?
Right. So council member?
I'm just asking.
I appreciate your point, but the other council members have given a consensus and we're gonna move ahead on that. Rest assured that I've cut every corner and every room that I can. LJA has been super helpful in negotiation of those type of things. And veteran Linga has done everything they can up to inspire saving like that each EDC system. So we will, we will keep doing that. All right, are we on L? Okay. All right, moving on to item L, the top of the next page. Discuss and take action regarding CenterPoint energies and application for approval to amend its distribution costs with recovery factor. The letter that you see, email that's attached is from our GCC, G-C-C-C affiliation. Floyd Goslink, Rochelle in Townsend. This is the group that we've joined. We've talked about them previously, but as a recap, this is a group that joins all the small cities, put a small march together, and they advocate on our behalf around CenterPoint. Their recommendation is that we take no action. The filing from CenterPoint is to amend its DCRF to include about $8 million in invested capital through September 30th, 2024. The requested revenue requirement is $323 million. Average 1,000 kilowatt residential rate would be $5.79, which is an increase of $1.83 from your last DCRF. The effective date is February 3rd, 2025. And you can see in their letter that due to the highly expedited nature of these proceedings, we do not recommend that your city take any action. They'll monitor the docket for open events and keep us posted in the matter, but not plan on intervening. So if we have consensus from council to not take action, we don't have to make a motion and vote, but we need to be in consensus to follow the advice of our legal counsel on this. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item N. Discuss and take action regarding Portman County Precinct One, plans for daily park. We have, I don't know, thirty pages, I think, or so of, of plans for the park. Don't worry, we print it on both sides. This is in our ETJ, and they ask for our approval to move forward on the next phase of their plan. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. It says they don't need our approval.
Not, not specifically since they're the ETJ, but they do have an ETC. Doing the second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Fall in favor? Any opposed? We're unanimous on that. Thank you. Item N doesn't require any action. This is discussion regarding the city administrator position. Councilmember Cox, you asked me why we are still advertising for a city administrator on the Texas Municipal Week page. During our budget development and during the final meeting where the budget was adopted, I specifically asked council to make sure I was clear on our direction that we would continue to advertise and search for a city administrator. And when that person was found, council would fund up to the $109,000 budget that we have previously approved and whatever else is required to be approved by council and funded from reserves. So that's why we are still advertising for a city administrator.
That was not my question. The question, or the, the TML listing was placed last month. It was not placed during budgeting at all. It was placed last month, newly placed.
Am I arguing with you about that? Item six is adjourned to executive session. We do not have a session planned. So we'll skip down to item nine, reports. ECA and ECB did not meet in the month of December due to holidays and schedules. But either of our board members have updates to deliver? No?
No, ma'am.
No. Okay, thank you. Keep signing some beautiful update. How was the event, ma'am?
It was great. Um, the weather dampened it a little bit. Uh, but it was successful, um, all the way around. So thank you for everybody that came out.
Wonderful. I think the kids had a good time.
I think the kids had a blast. FYI, we're judging Christmas lights this weekend, Sunday. So if y'all wanna put lights out, this is the time to do it.
Just so I give you my address, you wanna...
Oh, yeah.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. I honestly don't recall if the light, the decorations were up already, probably someone had it last meeting, but thank you again to all the volunteers who came out and worked on decorations and helped deploy them. Volunteers that came and helped with the, keep the roundup and volunteers that cleaned it up. Volunteers then went out and picked up the directional signs, so the work continues to go on along the scenes. And those are our friends and neighbors, not just the board members. So thank you to everybody who's doing that. I have delivered all of the updates I think that I have for you. Let me check my list one last time. Plumbing. So the hot water heater that broke yesterday at city hall, council already knows about that because I was asking if anybody could please bring a DPA fire plan to that. We're trying to dry out the ceiling. The plumber came today and that equipment is shot. So the bid that we got today is only $1,881 to replace it and install it. It's in a precarious position and there's an extra fee. I will investigate, um, Justin's recommendation, the instant hot and see if we can get some additional information and quotes before we forward on addressing that. So we still have water in the restrooms. There's just not hot water at this point. It's not keeping us from doing business, so I'll keep you posted on how that develops. And that is the last for me. Any council members have reports? All righty. Bill?
No, I just wanna say that, um, if, though it feels like it's been just a minute, it's been roughly about a year since I became your, um, city attorney. So I appreciate the, the past year, and I'm still here. This isn't my resignation, no, I'm dead. Uh, but I just wanna say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you, so thank you all.
Thank you so much. Nancy, anything on you for four?
No, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Our next city council meeting date is not final because we haven't received our confirmation back about the availability of this room. So it'll either be the first or third Tuesday. Could be both. We'll get back to everybody as soon as that's finalized, but it should be this week. Those will be our regular dates. So item five is adjourned. Merry Christmas and thank you for being here. It is 8:52.